Talking to me?
Yeah, everything's over there like that side's closed already. Except for HCPD.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Oh. Thanks, guys.
Good evening, Council. Terry Casada, CIP manager. Oxbow and Pauline Street, which is one of our oldest projects on the listing. We continue coordinating with HR Mud. As a matter of fact, staff met with them yesterday. Their project is slightly delayed due to delivery of their materials. However, they still expect that they will complete their line installation by April of 2022, so we're working to be ready to piggyback on, not piggyback on it, but follow their project so that we can begin the paving and the drainage improvements. Municipal facilities phase one, we're working on the final stages of the application. We need to submit a projection for capital improvement projects, so we're working on that so that we can finalize the finance, financial feasibility study, and submit to the USDA. And then there will be a series of steps that the council will need to take to finalize the process, to include the final review of plans by the USDA. And again, seeing the rendering of what we expect this facility will look like. Golden Eagle Park, council, we continue working with the contractor on this project. As we've been reporting, we've reinstituted weekly meetings. Most of them are face-to-face because we believe that's the best way to do some problem solving as we're looking at the issues that have come up. This week, the contractor is working on a drain that will drain water from the pump. The pump is at a position in the park where it has flooded at least twice. And so we want to make sure that that doesn't happen again. Once that is completed, then the contractor will bring an electrician and bring the manufacturer of the pump so that they can assess what the damage is before we even begin repairing, discussing the repairs to the pump. The sod, we made a determination that at this point, or at least when we began the conversations, it was not the time to replace or do anything with the sod that we have identified as not being up to specifications. So we expect that in the spring, we can do some work on sod, and that again brings it up to the design specifications. Corky Park, the contractor and construction manager had a final walkthrough. They are, the contractor is working on the punch list items. One of those are repairs to hairline cracks on the park, the skateboard park. So that will require for the specialized contractors to come back and make those repairs. But we've had a good experience with this contractor. We are, however, experiencing damage to the irrigation heads. There are ATVs that are entering the park. I understand that staff has had to ask these people to leave, that motorized vehicles are not, should not be on the park. We're looking at installing signs so that public knows that that's not an appropriate use at this park. And we're also looking at a phased acceptance of this project again, given the repairs to the skateboard park that have to take place. Again, you have what that looks like. We've gotten an updated scope of work and fee for Benton Riderwood Dog Park. And so we're still planning to, we begin design of this project in this, this year. Regional Park, you've seen this before. We are collaborating with Economic Development Corporation. They have contracted with Pinnacle to perform feasibility study that will take all of these analyses under consideration and provide recommendations to the ADC and to the council as to what the next steps should be and whether or not a recreational facility that is something beyond a park that meets the local needs is financially feasible. That's something that we can do. We expect that this is a once-in-a-generation type of opportunity, so we want to make the right decision for the kind of park and the facilities that will be at that location. We're still evaluating APA transition plan statements and qualifications, but we expect to bring a contract to you at the March meeting. As far as the street maintenance program, the strip being on Darrington was completed. Praxilene continues, and the contractor is well within the timeframe to complete this project, which is April of 2022. They faced some weather-related delays because the temperature has to be at a specific level for them to continue performing the work, but they're well within, within the contractual requirements. We're reviewing the available funding to develop the pipeline. Bro again is one of the projects that we will be using street maintenance funds to, to finance. Finally, an update on federal and state-funded projects, a North Darrington reconstruction. We expect that we'll get environmental approval. This is a big milestone for project development. I realize that it's not a particularly visible milestone in project development. No dirt gets turned. But for federally funded projects, this is significant because this is what authorizes the entities that are implementing these projects to go forward with property acquisition, they go forward with final design. So it is a significant milestone, and we expect again that we will get that at the end of this month or early in March. The project construction has been shifted to fiscal year 2023. We reported that before. And that's again to allow us to coordinate with the utilities and with property acquisition. We continue to work with TexasDOT and their design team and their utility coordination. We're having monthly meetings on overall utility coordination. We're working with Texas Gas Services for an encroachment so it can have a dual left turn lane at the intersection of Darrington and Horizon. And we're working with the HR Mud. They don't, they have facilities, as the council is aware, on Darrington, on North Darrington, but they have a lot more facilities on Horizon. And that is presenting some challenges, so we continue to work with the consultant and HR Mud to coordinate those. And again, we've talked about the next steps that the town will have to take as far as the process for acquiring the parcel for the storm sewer installation and for the drainage plant. We have two safety projects where we just kicked off the design, and that's South Darrington Safety Lighting and North Canaso Safety Lighting. TexasDOT will be designing these projects for the town to meet the deadlines, are pretty aggressive deadlines. And so the years that you see at fiscal year 2022 is accurate. It'll be an award or a letting late in fiscal year 2022, August. However, there are delays in project starts due to long lead times for the lighting fixture poles. We were advised just last week that it's taking about 120 days or just giving the contractors 120 days at the beginning of the project because that's just how long it's taking them to get the poles. So this is not something that's unique to Horizon City or to these projects. It's just what is being experienced in the construction industry right now. I wanted to highlight the public involvement meetings for the MTP development. This is the Metropolitan Transportation Plan through the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And so you'll see that one of the meetings happened last Thursday. I'm not sure how or what intended that was, since that's the day that we had Weather Day. But there are several other meetings. This is for the public to submit their comments. So again, please feel free to, to look at the plans and and voice your support for Horizon Projects, the projects that are on the long-term plan. North Darrington is on the long-term plan because it has to be there in order to be on the short-term plan. But the two, the transportation projects with the TOD, Dilling Delake and the Transit Plaza are also on the plan. So again, we ask that you take a look at this if you have the time. Now, these two slides, the two following slides, you'll notice are very different format from what we had, what we usually report. And late in February, staff received a request from Congresswoman Escobar's office. They're making a presentation for the implementation of the newest transportation bill. And what she requested from municipalities is give us your top priority projects. And how will these federal funds help your specific community? So we made very busy slides because we had to fit a lot of information into the slides. And we highlighted three projects that we believe follow the guidelines that council has provided to staff. And that's North Darrington Reconstruction. We have a funding gap in this project. So although the design is ongoing, we're still looking for funds to get, get it built. So we provided information on that. The estimated project cost is $25.4 million in $2022, and as we just reported, this will be built in 2023. So we provided them the location, the cross-section of what the street will look like. The second project that we emphasized was municipal facilities phase one. Even though this is coming through USDA funding, again, we wanted to make sure that the Congresswoman's office and and Congress in general and the administration understood that this is another transformative project for Horizon City. And then we emphasized the transit-oriented development, the TIRZ that the town has already created, what it will look like, some of the renderings. These are not new graphics for the council. But we wanted again to put in as much information as we could. We wanted to share with you what we had submitted over to the Congresswoman's office. Later on your agenda today, you have the Ward of TOD Architectural Guidelines. We have an agreement with Abel City for your consideration. And we are happy to discuss that when that item comes out. And the other TOD update is that we have a very short turnaround time for the 2022 RACE Grant. You may recall that we submitted an application in the summer of 2021. We went to a number of partner agencies, the HR Mud, the EDC Board, ARMS, the County of El Paso, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and asked all of them for their support. This is round two. We're gonna do the same thing. We're gonna refresh our application, make sure that, that we highlight how the project does not only the things that we've talked about for the town, but also meets the, the policy priorities for the federal government. Because it does, for example, access to jobs, access to minority populations. And so sometimes we don't think of those things, but certainly want to let the rest of the US know that this is the transformative project, and it's a good use of federal funds. So subject to your questions, and it's not January 8th, but subject to your questions, that's our report.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gessner.
I have a question regarding the park. Can we go back to the rendering of the park yourself? So I had a couple of questions. One was regarding the playground that is the new playground that you see at the bottom there on the right-hand side. Is there gonna be a playground there? Okay, there's a playground now, unless there was one within the next past week or so. I haven't seen the playground. I've just seen the slide. It's just a long slide.
Yeah, that, and that's, there's a slide, and I thought there was some, some playground movement that we highlighted in a previous presentation, but I would double check.
Yes, that was, that was the main concern, because I've been asked about that.
Okay.
If we are gonna be adding that playground on, on there.
Okay.
Then the other question was, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't remember from our meetings that we had regarding the park, but were we gonna add a concrete slab from the Oz to the park itself? Because right now, you can't get through there.
Right.
It's not, it's not handicap accessible.
I don't believe that was part of the scope.
We talked about anything like that.
And I don't believe that was part of the scope, but I'm not sure if, yeah.
I believe we were limited just to within the boundary of the park.
I didn't remember that is doing part of the scope.
I think in the future, we need to look at doing something in that area, just in between. Because as you know, we have our senior center that's part of our tree lighting and a lot of, you know, you know, individuals that are handicapped or not, it is difficult to walk through there without having a sidewalk. So I think that's something we can look at in the future.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, item number eight. This is a presentation on a presentation by Del Sol Medical Center introducing the new CEO.
We have Mr. Art Datsan, the Chief Executive Officer of Del Sol Medical Center. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman, council members and community members. My name is Art Garza. I am the CEO of Del Sol Medical Center. I started this role just a few weeks ago on January 10th. Las Palmas Del Sol Healthcare System is part of the Hospital Corporation of America. It's a family of hospitals, approximately 180 strong throughout the country. I've been employed by this organization for 30 years this coming April. I'm extremely proud to be appointed and accept the position of the CEO of Del Sol Medical Center. Prior to that, I served in Brownsville, Texas. I'm a native of Brownsville in different leadership roles and in part to that in Houston, Denver, and Nashville. Having arrived in the city just over a month ago, I've enjoyed exploring the many amenities our community has to offer, and I've been greeted with kind smiles and open arms of wonderful people of this community that have a great sense of pride and ownership. I've explored the different sectors of the greater El Paso area, and I'm proud to announce that within the next week or two, I'll be moving into a beautiful home just a few blocks from here in this community. And I'm excited to start a new chapter of my life with my wife in this amazing area. As does Del Sol Medical Center's Chief Executive Officer, I'd be remiss if I didn't take the opportunity to thank you for your support and your trust in our healthcare delivery team. Last year, Las Palmas Del Sol Healthcare System hosted over 24,000 hospital admissions, over 89,000 ER visits, delivered over 4,500 babies, and cared for literally thousands of our friends and family members that were impacted by COVID-19, COVID-19 virus. And we're incredibly humbled and honored to care for this amazing community. Over the next couple of months, I plan to ask the City of Horizon leaders to help me and my team better understand the ways in which we can be better partners to this council, to this team, so that together we can plan for future growth, economic development, and of course, the provision of healthcare for those that we serve. I'm excited about the opportunity to serve on these different communities, or committees rather, and I look forward to working closer with all of you and getting to know you better. With that said, I promised to be brief. I simply wanted to come before you and introduce myself to you and let you know that you now have one more friend, a new one, at Del Sol Medical Center. So with that said, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, item number nine. This is on a request from the Centennial Lions Club for campus approval for the town to offer in-kind services for the annual Christmas tree lighting ceremony on Friday, December 2nd, 2022, and the annual Christmas parade on Saturday, December 3rd, 2022, in order to provide security and allow the use of safe streets in the city park for events.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good to see you. First of all, thank you so very, very much for last year's parade. It is just what we need. It was wonderful. Thank you so, so much. I am asking permission for this year's parade, but I'm not sure we can do it without chief. I'm not sure it's gonna work, but oh, thank, thank you so much for everything you've done for us, always, all through all these years. It's just been amazing. Thank you. December 3rd is our prospective date for the parade, so December 2nd would be the Christmas tree lighting. And we're just asking permission of the council, and everybody, if that is acceptable with you, please.
Make a motion to approve.
Seven. Motion to approve. And then a second, are they, yes, then.
May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
My name is Terry Cullen, and I'm the legal counsel. I'd like to recommend that we have an, an agreement to document what the in-kind services are, just so that people will know that there's not a gift of public funds. It's not unusual. And then that way, we can come back to council, and council will know exactly how much is being spent from the various departments, and it will protect your organization and it will protect the city council.
Sure.
And I would like to work with you and staff so we can develop that and bring it back to council at next month.
Fine, thank you.
Motion, those motion executives feel stand.
Yes, just for the request.
For the request.
And I am proud to say that we were able to do the 75 turkey boxes here for Horizon City. Plus, because some of our members are, live in El Paso, we were able to do an additional 50 boxes in their areas also. So we're just, we're thrilled with that, and thank you so much because that's what we do the parade for.
Well, thank you, Judy, and I appreciate all the work that you do.
I just had, I had to give up being Mrs. Claus, darn it.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Corra. Aye.
Motion, Carrie. Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you so much.
Item number ten is special in action, that the town of Horizon City acquire software licenses and an annual maintenance slash software subscription for their standard Questica budget book and standard CIP add-on from Questica LTV, and that the mayor be authorized to sign the documents on December 17th. The documents to the December 17th, 2019 agreement for the standard Questica budget book with a standard CIP add-on.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilman Pat Ranlio, Finance Director. That was a long introduction for a piece of software that we would like to acquire. What this software will do, it's an add-on to our current budget software, and it will help us produce a better document and also be able for us to be able to archive stuff better.
Let's approve. Second. Are you motion to approve them safely? Any further questions from the council? Who did not? Please, Holy Council.
Miller.
Aye.
Kiroz.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Renteria.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Corras. Aye.
Motion, Carrie's.
Thank you, Council.
Item number 11. This is also discussion in action, that the mayor be authorized to sign a five-year software license and support agreement with Bonfire Interactive LTV for the Bonfire e-Sourcing software for municipal procurement for an annual cost of $11,500 using Texas Department of Information Resources contract DIRTSO 4363.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Just a brief review on this package. This software package, sorry. PCOS, so I'm sorry, I apologize. Yes, purchasing agent. Thank you. Sorry about that. So this offer will enable us to go from manual mode as far as using spreadsheets, work processes. We're gonna continue using work processes. And to automate the request for proposals, tracking critical deadlines. One of the things this will allow us to do is basically notify key players in the process of acquiring services or product in a timely manner, be able to evaluate bids, tabulate the results, and, and be able to have basically a reported body of information there in case there is some kind of a, a complaint by any of the vendors that have participated in the proposal, we'll be able to submit that. Just so you all know, this, the software was originally quoted out at $16,500, but they gave us a one-year discount, but after we reviewed the DIR contract that we have along with some negotiations, we will be able to reduce this down to $11,500 per year, which is a cost savings of $20,000 over the next five years. So we were able to hold that price, that cost for that software for the next five years. That includes three users along with contract management. That means once we lock in with a proposal, it converts into a contract, we'll be able to monitor that contract over the next five years or whatever length of term of services over agreements here. Also, this software package is not new to El Paso. UNC, the Hospital of Children's Hospital, uses that UNC along with El Paso Community College. When I contacted them and asked them for a referral as far as what kind of information, they all had positive, positive comments on that. They were really enthused about that. Community College, you know, I'm not gonna quote the person's name. They said, yeah, we went from manual mode for doing it for 50 years to automation. It was a really good package. So my request to you, Mayor and council members, if you all would approve this proposal so that we can sign and move forward with the implementation phase.
Now, do you have questions?
Yes.
Can you implement this right away and you can use the software?
Yes, we're gonna be working on that. Yes, I mean, it's not like we have to wait. We just have to basically provide the purchase order and move forward with the implementation phase as far as identifying the workflow, the process, where it's gonna go. Most of these requests for proposals, they're generated with, starting with the scope of work from each department. We encapsulate that in the document. We review it, goes back and forth a couple of times, and then it goes through legal. So that's one of the things that we're incorporating. But within that feature is there was also a timeline, so it's like, hey, what's going on with this proposal? Boom, we can take a look at that and see where it's at on work step or whatever. Yes, sir.
Thank you for that presentation and a lot of hard work to, you know, diligent hard work as a savings, not just to the community, but to everybody, you know, I as a savings, not just to the community, but to everybody, you know, I appreciate that. I make motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion approved. There's a second.
Yes, sir.
Eleven thousand five hundred dollars, do they go by a user license or limited amount of users can use it?
There's, right now, that cost includes three users that we have. It's for the bonfire e-sourcing, the actual package, the implementation, the setup and the training, and that includes the contract, uh, setting up the contract, and that includes for three seats, so for three individuals. So let's say we drop down, that would be a reduction of, of forty-five hundred.
Okay.
Or if we increase it, then we would have to add that charge.
Yes.
Are there any further questions from the council? Please poll the council.
Miller.
Aye.
Quiros.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Renteria.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Corra. Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you, mayor and council members.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number twelve, item fourteen, are going to be taken together, and I'm gonna be reading uh, the public hearings into record, and then we're gonna take a uh, uh, a vote on uh, each of the individual items. Um, item number twelve, public hearing, this is a second reading of ordinance adopting a zoning change within the municipal limits of the town of Horizon City, Texas. Re-zoning one parcel from P U D to C one containing approximately eight point six nine acres, being a portion of section thirty-one, block seventy-eight, township three, Texas and Pacific Railroad, uh, Railroad companies surveys uh, town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, south of the intersection of Canazo Avenue and Eastlake Boulevard, and authorizing the notation of the change on the official zoning map of the city, providing for the following findings effect, repealer severability, and proper notice and hearing. Item number fourteen, this is the public hearing, um, on the second reading of an ordinance adopting a zoning change within the municipal limits of the town of Horizon City, Texas, re-zoning one parcel from P U D to C one containing approximately four point nine four four acres, uh, being a portion of section thirty-one, block seventy-eight, township three, Texas and Pacific Railroad companies, company surveys, town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, north of the intersection of Canazo Avenue and Horizon Boulevard, and authorizing limitation of the change on the official zoning map of the city, providing for the following findings effect, repealer severability, and proper notice and hearing.
Good evening, mayor and council, Michelle Barea Planning Director. Let's get to the right items. Oh, I'm sorry. So these are the, the public hearings for the two rezoning requests along Canazo Avenue. Uh, parcel one is just uh, just under nine acres in size, and it's north of Horizon Middle School. And parcel two is just under five acres in size, and it's south of Desert Hills Elementary School. The original request was to rezone from P U D planned unit development to C two commercial. However, due to their proximity to the schools and surrounding residential developments, staff recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission that they be rezoned to C one. And the commission agreed, and so their recommendation to council was to rezone to C one, uh, not C two. This is the future land use map. This is what staff needs to refer to when making uh, recommendations on rezoning. So the areas in question, in accordance with the future land use map, call for medium residential and high-density residential. Now, neither of these will provide that, however, uh, the surrounding developments and that the Canazo corridor does have a significant amount of commercials, so this is consistent with what is existing and what is coming forward uh, along Canazo. This is the aerial map of parcel one, which is the uh, eight point seven acre parcel. Parcel two, which is the uh, just uh, slightly modified five acre parcel. The location of parcel one and the survey. This is the preliminary plat that is subject to the approval of this rezoning request. This was uh, recommended for approval at the last city council meeting. And this is the location map for parcel two. The survey. And the preliminary plat that was approved also subject to the approval of the rezoning. These are pictures of parcel one. You can see here that the required signage was installed on the property notifying the public of the rezoning case, but it does still read C two because that was the original request. This is looking south on Canazo. The bottom picture is looking north, and you can see the existing commercial development. This is across the street. There is some existing uh, single-family residential. And then uh, further north, it is vacant, but there is a C two frontage with a planned residential uh, zoning just beyond that, and then beyond that entire Tuscany Village development, there's existing single-family residential. Parcel two, there's the sign, looking north, uh, you can kinda see the rock wall here, and that's the property line of the elementary school. To the south is the new car wash that recently opened, and a vacant commercial lot. And across Canazo is a vacant lot that is owned, uh, A one apartments, and then single-family beyond that. Uh, we did have one person attend the Planning and Zoning Commission to ask questions about the difference between C two and C one. Uh, C two would allow for cars and landways and heavy um, auto repair, like painting and, and body repair. And C one allows for more neighborhood-friendly uses, like restaurants and smaller detailed developments. And so, uh, the applicant's representative, Mr. Conrad Punda, was in attendance and did state that the applicant is in agreement with the C one zone. And he's also here tonight, uh, to give any questions.
Would anyone from the public like to address uh, item number twelve? To address the council, uh, how close the public hearing? And uh...
This, this will be the discussion in action portion of uh, the uh, the re-zoning, uh, one parcel from P U D to C one containing approximately eight point six nine acres.
I'll entertain a motion. Second. There's a motion to approve and a second? If there are no further questions, please poll the council.
Miller. Quiros.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Renteria.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Corra. Aye.
And motion carries.
Item number fifteen, this is the discussion in action session of the re-zoning, uh, one parcel from P U D to C one containing approximately four point nine four four acres.
Is there a motion? Second. There's a motion to approve and a second? Thank you, Ms. Lou. Uh, if there are no further questions, please poll the council.
Miller. Quiros.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Renteria.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Corra. Aye.
Motion carries.
With this action, is that all of the P U D?
No, there's still a, a significant amount of, of land that's not.
Are you ready? She wanted to.
Item number sixteen, this is a discussion action item uh, on a preliminary plat application for Horizon Crossing Unit Three, S U V zero zero two four nine two dash two zero two one, legally described as being a portion of C D Stewart Survey number three twenty-one, town of Horizon City, El Paso County, Texas, containing nineteen point, nineteen point four six nine plus or minus acres, applications submitted by Conde in California.
Good evening, council, Michelle Barea Planning Director. This is the preliminary plat for Horizon Crossing Unit Three. This is, I believe, the last phase of the commercial development, uh, just west of the Walmart development. Uh, last month, the council approved the recording plat for Horizon Crossing Unit Two, which is uh, the commercial frontage on uh, Horizon Boulevard. This, the zoning map is not yet been updated, but this was a zoning plan that was submitted uh, for the recent rezoning of, of this particular property. And so the plat encompasses this area here. This is the aerial map and the location map and the plat. It is quite busy because of the contour lines, so it's, this is a zoomed-in version of it with the boundaries line um, identified. They are proposing four commercial lots, uh, with access from a fifty-foot private driveway utility and drain adjustment. Uh, on January seventeenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this preliminary plat application with the condition that all staff comments be addressed prior to city council action. The applicant has done that. Um, however, one of the staff comments was that, that fifty-foot lease might be recorded prior to the plat being reported, and it be referenced on the plat, and so staff continues to uh, make that recommendation. So uh, staff is recommending approval with the condition that, that lease might be recorded prior to the plat being recorded. Additionally, staff continues to work with the developer on a developer participation agreement for the uh, maintenance of this pond. Council may recall at last month's meeting when they approved the Horizon Town Center Unit Four development. Uh, this pond is serving both the residential and the commercial, um, and most of the water entering that pond will be from the commercial development. And so we're working with the developer on uh, the shared costs of the maintenance of that pond. And so we anticipate that that will come back with the final plat at the March meeting. It's currently scheduled to go before planning and zoning at their February twenty-first meeting.
Motion to approve as staff recommendation.
Oh, okay, yeah. Thank you, Ms. Barea. And uh, we, we don't know yet what's gonna go in there.
Yes.
Right, um, so it, it is four commercial lots. I know people were, some people were anticipating a large uh, box we tailor, but we don't believe that's what we built, unfortunately.
Is this gonna be C two? Will they be C two lots, all four?
Here, C, sorry, yes, I'll see.
Is there, is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. If there are no further questions from the council, please, please poll the council.
Miller.
Aye.
Quiros.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Renteria.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Corra. Aye.
And motion carries.
Item number seventeen, this is on a request, uh, discussion action item, on a request to authorize the mayor to execute a personal services contract with Jose Estariñardo for inspection and plan review services.
Good evening, council. This is another agreement for on-call inspection and plan review services. It's sim, it's very much like other contracts that we have with other inspectors. Some of those have not continued on to provide those services, and so this will be an additional resource for the city to utilize. We anticipate a lot of construction coming in in the next few years. In addition to that, Mr. Ray Alvalo is a, an inspector for Horizon City for fifteen years. He recently retired, and so he has expressed interest to come back and provide on-call services, and we welcome him back with open arms. So we hope that council will approve this contract so that we can get him on board to provide these services when needed.
I also have an inspector's license.
Second. And a motion to approve and a second?
This is a, this is a three-year contract, and then um, involved.
Please poll the council.
Miller.
Aye.
Quiros.
Aye.
Ortega. Renteria.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Corra. Aye. Item number eighteen, this is on a request to authorize the mayor to execute a personal services contract that Mr. Gordon for co, uh, grant writing services.
Mayor and council, the uh, Horizon City staff and the Horizon E D C have identified a need for assistance with uh, identifying funding opportunities and applying for such opportunities. And so um, we interviewed Ms. Gordon, her, her experience um, fits right in line with what we're looking for, and she's familiar with the area. Um, the services would be shared with Horizon City and E D C, and so with the cost. And so um, it's a one-year contract, so we will see how it, it pans out, and, and if both parties are willing to extend, we'll bring another contract forward next year. Um, but still, we need to go to the E D C board for approval, and then uh, once it's executed, we'll be one year from that date. And so staff is recommending approval of this one-year contract. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
I'm also asking you to agree that there is supposedly what could be significant funding opportunities come down, coming down from Congress, and we need to be ready to respond.
Yes, sir, I agree.
Not only in identification, but in, in possibly the application. So I think it's critical to, to this, to the town that we be ready to do what we can to benefit from what, what largest we can get from, from the federal government.
I have a question. Is this funding gonna be, this funding gonna be shared with Horizon and also the E D C, or?
Well, we, I, we anticipate that it will be different funding categories, so um, any work that she does for Horizon City will be funds that are available to Horizon City, and where the E D C and, and opportunities that they see might be available to them. There may be an opportunity to partner.
You know, it just, it, it takes from your job having to input and grant, and I know Chief McConnell does a lot of grant writing, and uh, we really need someone to de, be dedicated solely to that.
Well, and, and you know that we can't catch every opportunity, but I feel like having someone dedicated to that will help us um, identify more opportunities than staff looking at it and trying to, to find the time to look for that.
And funds available for health services or what?
We have a, well, I can speak for myself. Planning has a contract labor uh, budget line item that has uh, availability for, 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 you know, get it from there, that E D C alone has a similar uh, budget line item.
Motion to approve. There's a motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second? There are no further questions, please poll the council.
Miller.
Aye.
Quiros.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Renteria.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Corra. Aye.
And motion carries.
Item number nineteen, discussion in action on a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a personal services agreement to keep the town of Horizon City, Texas, and Able City LLC for a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, having fifty dollars to provide architectural design standards for the town of Horizon City's transit-oriented public and private development.
Good evening, council. Terry Casara, C I P manager. Uh, this is the agreement that I referenced in the C I P update. Uh, Able City will be providing primarily the architectural guidelines for the transit-oriented development. As we've been discussing the transit-oriented development, it's important for the city to determine what the character of that development is going to be, so that it is a unified cohesive theme. And we want to be able to point to guidelines for the developers so that they know what it is that those, that, that the city's expectations are. Um, in our discussions and, and negotiations with Able City, they also indicated that they could identify and recommend desired land use changes that align with the town's plans objectives. And so we believe that that is something that works hand in glove with the overarching uh, architectural guidelines. So that is part of the scope that is being brought before you. Uh, we anticipate that the project will take nine months to develop, and um, Able City is ready to begin next week. We will issue a, a notice to proceed. We will have to take this agreement also to the T I R S E board, uh, for their approval as well. Uh, but we believe that we can get um, uh, get started on this. And this also provides another tool for the E D C to begin developing uh, the financial toolkit, uh, the economic development toolkit that we also want to have in place for, uh, for the T O D. So subject to your questions, staff recommends approval of this agreement.
Yes, sir.
In the negotiation, did you discuss, is, will there be a public involvement outreach portion of this?
Absolutely.
So we'll have your opinion to comment.
Absolutely, absolutely. Uh, there will be public outreach, um, and there will be presentations to um, to various entities, so that this is not a surprise for anybody, but public outreach is a key component of the scope of work. Yes, sir.
Yeah, and this is our, as the council, this is our opportunity to make our mark on this, on this community and uh, really oversee that development of the T O D. I'm excited. Probably after my term is done, but uh, I'm pretty excited, and I'm so proud to be a part of that.
Just as additional information for the council, there are two open houses that are part of the scope of work, and again, presentations to the council.
Is there a motion on the floor? There's a motion approved and a second, and a second? Please poll the council.
Miller.
Aye.
Quiros.
Aye.
Ortega.
Aye.
Renteria.
Aye.
Duran.
Aye.
Padilla.
Aye.
Corra. Aye.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Deputy.
Okay, item number twenty, this is on the approval of the twenty twenty-two local border security grant resolution.
Good evening, mayor and council. Mike McConnell, please, chief. Uh, tonight, uh, this item is presenting for the F Y twenty twenty-two local border security grant uh, application. And this is uh, an application that we have done. This is, uh, an application that we have done, um, for at least about twelve years, maybe more. And so, uh, this is, uh, basically an overtime grant, provides, uh, assistance, assistance to, uh, to help with local border s- security uh, and, uh, activities, uh, that they fund for that. There is no match for the, uh, the grant, and it is beneficial for the community, and I certainly would recommend that you consider along that procedure.
Motion to approve, and, and chief, thank you for such a nice report. It's always condensed, to the point, highlights very good stuff about our community, our police department, and so forth, and I thank you for your services. Thank you.
Second.
There's a motion approved and a second. If there are no further questions, please call the council.
Miller.
Hi.
Quiros.
Hi.
Cortega.
Hi.
Renteria.
Hi.
Duran.
Hi.
Corral.
Hi.
Motion carries.
Okay, item number twenty-one, this is on the appointment of Marco Vargas as police chief, and the, the mayor be authorized to negotiate employment contract.
Uh, we, uh, I wanna thank all the, uh, Walter Miller, uh, Samantha Guadalupe, and, uh, Daryl Gillesco. He's a retired DPS officer. And myself, we sat on the panel that, uh, very detailed and, and, uh, pretty uplifting. And, uh, it was just a pretty dynamic, uh, day in, in the process of elimination that went through, uh, to get to our, uh, uh, candidate that we chose to be, uh, our next chief of police. And, uh, and he's sitting right back there, uh, Marco Vargas, and his, and his family. He's, uh, he's, uh, we've g- he'd given us an additional agree- uh, a, uh, a conditional agreement. So, uh, it's up to the council now to allow me to, uh, negotiate the rest of the contract for him. And, uh, he'll, he'll, uh, sit in, replace, uh, Mike McConnell. A big job. And, uh, but he's, he's up for it, and I, and I'm, as I told the gentleman earlier, I'm totally confident in the person that, that we've chosen. He's a capable man, and, and, uh, I'm sure he'll do a wonderful job. I believe that with all my heart.
Chief. And, uh, just so everybody knows, uh, as far as the process goes, uh, just, to, just a slight recap. We did use a, um, an assessment center process that was a day-long event. Um, for the, uh, for the applicants, it started at, uh, about eight-thirty, uh, concluding with the final, uh, interview at, at, you know, four-thirty-ish or so in the, in that area. It involved, uh, writing exercises, analyzing problems, uh, that the panel, uh, got to view and scored those. It involved, uh, a discussion, a legalist discussion exercise where, uh, all three candidates, uh, that were remaining that day, um, participated in. And that also, uh, provided the, uh, the panel with another, um, another aspect or dimension, I guess, of, uh, of looking at examining, uh, the individuals. And finally, the interview itself, which we had, uh, about sixteen questions that the, uh, the panelists asked and provided a rating. And, uh, and after that, um, uh, my function, uh, was more HR than anything, uh, to help, just, just to make it so that the panelists could come in and do their job and not have to worry about all the paperwork and so forth. And of course, our HR, um, coordinator, uh, also helped with that, too, on the spreadsheets and providing documents and just, and, and, you know, going through the process. We did have, um, about fifty applicants, uh, to start with, and it really whittled itself down, uh, to finally one person. Um, but, uh, five people were invited to, uh, interview. One withdrew, the other one withdrew on the day of, leaving the three people. And that is what, uh, what happened on that day. It was a, it was a, it was a good process. I believe it was, um, bias-free. Um, and, um, these, these are not easy decisions, and I know the gentleman spoke early, you know, about internal, and they just, you know, um, it just, it is what it is, and the, the scores were what they are, and, and of course, I don't know if Mr., um, Corral or, or, um, I don't know, the mayor already spoke, and Alden Miller had anything else to say. But that's, it was, it was a good process, and I think we should...
Yes, it was one of the more thorough processes on it, and I've, I've been on a lot of panels before, and this was, I'll look say really, there was a lot to it. So, uh, I mean, it was like, I, I, I would really commend the chief for his process, 'cause the process was a little good.
I'm honored to have been selected to be on the committee. Um, this is the first time I've been a part of, uh, of a, um, process of this magnitude. Um, like Walter said, it, it was a very, um, lengthy process, and I'm glad that I was a part of it, and, um, we're definitely gonna miss you, chief. Thank you for, for supporting and helping us get through that.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I need a motion for item number twenty. Have we done, I guess, item twenty-one? Motion to...
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. Is there a second?
Second.
And, and a second? Please call the council.
Duran.
Hi.
Quiros.
Hi.
Cortega.
Hi.
Renteria.
Hi.
Duran.
Hi.
Corral.
Hi.
And motion carries.
Okay, item number twenty-two, this is a special action. This is on the presentation and acceptance of the twenty-two annual police and racial profiling reports.
Mayor and council. Good evening, Mike McConnell, please chief. And so this will be my final, so this is the best I've ever shown, huh? So, um, actually, I thank Lieutenant Adrian for always doing a great job and providing the, uh, the graphics upfront, uh, very nicely, nicely done. And, um, we continue to have really good news, uh, with our, um, our state of crime, I guess, and how we approach it. Uh, we do have the lowest, uh, rate, crime rate in, in the county, uh, as far as municipality, and so we're, we're glad about that. We do understand that we, we believe Horizon City is just a special place. Well, we responded to about twenty thousand six seventy-nine calls. Um, and, um, and, um, we created a thousand thirty-eight written master reports. That decreased by twenty-nine. Uh, we saw a pretty good increase of, uh, accidents of about a hundred and six. So that would certainly, um, it's not surprising. Now, when you have all this growth going on, it's, that's gonna happen. Um, and of course, some of those accidents are pretty minor, and some of them are not. Uh, but, but most of them, uh, you know, a lot of them are barely reportable, but we, we classify it as an accident nonetheless. Uh, aggravated assaults, uh, simple assault have decreased from twenty-seven to nineteen. Individuals charged with minor thefts increased from twenty, uh, one to twenty-nine. Those are huge numbers, uh, and, but still each one is important. Um, arrests for narcotics dropped forty-seven to fifty-four from fifty-four last year. And, um, driving while under the influence increased from fifty-eight to sixty-two. So as our officers become more, uh, tenured, I guess, with more experience, or detect that, because we know there's a lot of, um, D W Y going on, and that's dangerous for the public. And so, but you can read some of the other information. Um, our telecommunication dispatchers, uh, they dispatched fourteen thousand four hundred ninety-two fire calls, a slight decrease. And, um, they dispatched twenty thousand six hundred seventy-nine calls for these, for a total of, um, thirty-five thousand one hundred and seventy-one calls, which is an increase of about six hundred twenty-seven. And of course, COVID has slowed down a lot of things, um, but we're starting now to see, uh, increase in that rate. We also present the, uh, the annual, um, uh, racial profile report as required by Texas law. And we have, uh, it's computerized, thankfully, uh, because they collect an awful lot of data, and we would not wanna have to do that by hand. It is, would be, I'm not sure how you could do that. Uh, but, uh, so every traffic stop is recorded, whether it's, um, uh, a warning or a written, uh, it is documented, and then we can find out a lot of information. We did not have any, uh, complaints of racial profiling filed with the office, and that report's been submitted to the hall. So, other than that, there's a lot of goo- good information you can see in here, and, and of course, some of this comes from the monthly reports that you get. But, uh, there were so many other things that, uh, that you can look at as far as some crime prevention activities and officer training, uh, and so forth. And, uh, so with that, I would ask for your approval of, of all of those reports.
We'll accept. Second.
There's a motion approved and a second. Were there any further questions or comments?
I just have a comment, to me.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, being that this is your final, I, um, report, I know it's, I'm being emotional too. I know it's very emotional for you. And, um, I just would like to personally thank you for your dedication to our, our community, to the council, to the staff, to, to our staff and the city. Um, to myself as well, so, um...
Thank you.
You're gonna be, you're gonna be missed. Thank you.
I have a comment, chief. You did say, one of your comments, that Horizon is special.
Yes.
It is special. I think that's why everybody sitting in here works it, or elected by the community. But we have a special service that we provide for our community, our services for constituents, 'cause it is special. And I thank you for making it that much more special, sir.
You're welcome.
And I, I think I can speak for you, along with the staff and city council, that you will remain with us in a special place. Thank you.
Is there a motion? Uh, do we need to do the motion?
Yes.
There's a motion and a second. Please call the council.
Quiros.
Hi.
Cortega.
Thank you.
Renteria.
Hi.
Duran.
Thank you, sir.
Hi.
Hi.
Corral.
Hi.
Motion carries. Uh, I have a presentation that I would like to give you. And I, um... Carmen, what do you want? Do you want to come up here? Says honoring your service presented to Michael McConnell, Town of Horizon City Chief, uh, Police Chief. In appreciation for over twelve years of loyal and dedicated service to the people of the, of the Town of Horizon City. We, the members of the city council, city staff, present this to you in recognition of your many years of sacrifice and service. You will always have a home here. We wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors, October two thousand nine and March twenty-two, twenty-two. Mike, you came here and, uh, you just turned this, this, uh, police department around. You've made it, you, you've got, brought us so many certifications and, and, uh, just brought a lot of pride and, and innovations, and, man, I, I tell you, it was, you really come in here and shook it up, and I can't thank you enough for, for being the, the, the police officer that you are. On, uh, on a personal level, I can't thank you enough for the contribution that you've made to me personally. As a Christian brother, you're example for the followers, Jesus Christ. I wanna be like you, and I thank you very much for all that you've done. For me, for our town, and for me as well. And Carmen, thank you very much. I love you both, and I'm gonna miss you a lot. Thank you. God bless.
Item number twenty-three A, um, this is gonna be on a real estate acquisition, uh, for transit-oriented developments slash city council development. Item, uh, section five-five-one point zero seven one and five-five-one zero point zero seven two of the local border.
Fred Diego, does this take a motion to go into...
We need a motion to go into...
I'm looking to go into executive session. We're now in executive session. If, um, we had, we had to have this room, uh, just not... Come on in. We're just temporarily...
How you doing?
Hello.
My name is Atisio.
Oh, Andre.
Are you with the newspaper?
No, sir.
Oh, okay. No, I was just wondering, 'cause you're videotaping, that's an all...
Oh, I have a YouTube channel, but I'm just some guy.
Oh, okay. What do you do?
Um, I don't have any fancy job, nothing.
No, no, but just...
Yeah. Uh, right now, I don't even have a job right at the moment, so...
My name is Atisio. I'm the purchasing agent.
Oh, you work for the city?
Yeah.
Oh, very nice to meet you, sir.
So nice to meet you.
And, uh, maybe I'll, I'll do a open records request and find out more about your, uh, department.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, there's not much to know, but we'll give you whatever you, you need if that's the case.
Oh, I, I always like to follow numbers and see what's being purchased, and, I mean, you know, just, see, see what the city's doing. Nothing, like, like I'm looking for anything bad or anything, just, yeah.
Very good.
But thanks for your service.
All right, thank you.
Um, what's the address to, um, the park's office?
Um, I, I'm new, sure, ma'am. So that's gonna be, give me a second here. Okay, it's gonna be twelve eight-nine-nine?
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Park Drive. Park Drive.
Okay, um, deputies wait for the...
Okay, okay, ma'am.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good day. Hello, yeah, I'm up here.
Hi, uh, so I'm Commissioner Oyebing from the County of El Paso. I just wanted to say goodbye to Chief McConnell. Is he, did he come back there?
Yes, yes, ma'am. Give me a second. We go to the other room.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are you the official videographer?
No, I don't think they, actually, no, they do have a city staff member that does video recording. Nope. Oh, I, yes, no problem.
Hold on. Bye-bye, good night.
Have a good night, guys.
But you know, it's sixty degrees today, so.
Excuse me, are you one of the women on, uh, that county board you're talking about, the Oscarate Park?
Um, so I'm one of the commissioners on the commissioners' court, yes, and so, one of the items that we're discussing right now is, uh, the Parks Master Plan for the county, and it has to do with Escata de Park, yes.
And like, they were taking off the two-dollar fee?
Yes, we just approved that yesterday, as a matter of fact.
Oh, that's gone.
Yes.
Okay, that was my question.
It goes into effect April first.
Okay, uh, 'cause I know somebody had said, like, you guys were trying to get the word out, so.
Yes, no, any help that you can give with that. We want to encourage more people to come visit Escata de, and so we didn't want the fee to be a barrier to that.
Right.
So that's why we, we're removing the fee. So as of April first, you don't have that two-dollar, um, gate fee for regular use of the park. So hopefully more families will come out and enjoy it.
Yeah, that sounds great, and I'm sorry, um,
No.
I'm not familiar with all the politicians. Your name is, uh?
I'm Idianna Oyebin, so I'm the county commissioner, that actually represents this whole east El Paso area, all the way down to the Mission Valley.
Okay, and, but you, you're part of a certain district?
Precinct three.
Precinct, right.
Precinct three, so it's all of this east side part, um, of the county, all the way down to the Mission Valley.
Okay, and, uh, who's this woman?
This is Gabby. She works in my office.
Okay.
So, we're gonna give you our card.
All right.
If you need any information, questions you have, you can contact, please feel free to call us.
I really appreciate you guys.
Yes, sir.
Drive safe.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Hello.
Hello.
I was running hot.
I'm sorry, uh, oh, yes, uh.
What you running on? Is this a seven Pro?
That is a thirteen.
Sorry, I don't wanna big zoom in on my ugly face.
I can turn it off if you want. It's not a big deal.
Oh, no, it's cool.
Okay.
I like the color. It's a baby blue one, huh?
You know, I can't even remember. I quickly put on my outer box. I don't even.
Oh.
Mm-hmm.
So what's new with you?
Um, I'm not in jail.
Well, that's good.
Is it okay if I turn the camera to you, or did you not?
Um, no, I don't wanna be on, like, no, bros, ew.
Okay, yeah, no, I'm not trying to make you uncomfortable.
I don't wanna hear the comments.
Well.
Pass.
Right, I got you. So, like I said, if you need me to turn off, just let me know.
Well, sure, turn it off.
Okay.